Everyone's here. Tristan. So the first order of business is executive session. Notice you'll have to leave this meeting and sign into a new meeting, school committee members. The Wilmington School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGLC 30AS 21A23 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Staff Development, all bargaining units. Wilmington School Committee will return to regular session following the executive session at 7:00 PM. We'll do a roll call. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly? Joe Newhouse?
Yes.
David Ragsdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Ben Bryson, yes. All right, I'll see you on the other link. Yep, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 13th, 2020 School Committee Meeting. We are just returning from executive session. Nice to see some community members. Thanks for joining us. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I'm gonna try and get this right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Item four, approval of items by consensus. First, we have approval of minutes, April 29th, 2020. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Bjork. All in favor? That's Tristan, that's unanimous. Thanks, everyone. We have approval of Wilmington Educational Foundation Curriculum Grants in the amount of $5,247. I just wanted to read the recipients. If I can pull that up quickly. Does anyone have that up already? Mr. Bjork, thank you. Can you read that?
Yep. So the Afro-Caribbean Workshop, the recipients are Teresa Pietro and Joanne Velez, Flexible Seating Project recipients. And that, by the way, was $1,200. Flexible Seating Project recipients are Diane England and Isabella Galant. For, and that's for roughly $750. Relationship Mentoring Resource Material Center recipient is Lisa King. That is for $400. Summer Reading Boast PACs. That recipient was Lisa King as well, for $500. Teaching to the Standards Science Curriculum. That's Ashley Rockerbauer. And that was for $549. Diversity in Narrative Nonfiction for Heather Peachey and Michelle Kirchian is for $840.37. Ukuleles in the Music Room. Recipient is Robin Barry for $965.50.
Excellent, thank you very much. And thank you Wilmington Educational Foundation for your very generous grant program. Would someone like to read the motion? Anybody, anybody? Mr. Samaha?
I move to accept the 2020 Wilmington Educational Foundation's Curriculum Grants in the amount of $5,240.70.
$204.
What did I say, 240? Sorry, $204.70.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Burns, thank you very much. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you again, WEF. Next, we have second reading, approval of policies, ADDAE1, BGD, MBID. We discussed these last week. There's some extra, some additional information for you there. Is there a motion to approve? Mrs. Burns, thank you very much. Is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? Mr. Bjork, I just don't, okay, perfect. That is unanimous. Thank you. We have warrants G422, R228, R229, L69, L70, L71, FS32, and FS33. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Fennelly. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And we have payroll ending 5/6/2020. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? Again, unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. That brings us to item five, which is our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much. There are just two items this evening under the superintendent's report. Some more information regarding COVID-19 when we get to that under new business. First off, just a brief update on the Assistant Superintendent search. First off, I just want to extend thanks to all of the members of our community who took the time out of their schedules to participate in the virtual site visits. As you know, we recently had four candidates that were advanced forward from the efforts of the search committee. And my thanks to them for their great work as we set to finalize a replacement for Dr. Regan as he prepares to move on from the district at the end of June. We had, we had a total of a little bit over 40 applications in total that were received by the district. The search committee interviewed 11 and then advanced four for further consideration. We are in the final stages of the search, completing reference checks and preparing to set our sights on a finalist to move forward for the school committee's consideration. And I anticipate by, if not later this week, beginning of the next week, I should have an announcement to be able to share with the, with the community. So please stay tuned for more information, but things are progressing well and we are in a great place. We had, I think, really four very strong candidates. And kudos again to the committee who did great work and for our timing to be able to attract some very worthwhile folks to consider. The proposal for graduation is the second item. There is, there is a draw your attention to an item in the packet for you from Ms. Peters on this. I know that all districts are grappling with how exactly to best honor seniors during these challenging times of COVID-19 and the limitations on social gatherings. Ms. Peters and her team, as you might imagine, has been working hard to explore and consider possibilities. And, and so I asked her to put together something so that you could have a sense of her thinking around what this looks like. I think, as everyone knows, we do not, at this point in time, have any clarity from the governor in terms of what potential social gatherings might look like going forward. And I think, as we all are well aware, the time of graduation in June is not very far away. And so Ms. Peters has put together a plan that I think is, is, is wise considering the likely limitations that we're going to have. And unfortunately, sadly, but obviously a reality for so many, that the traditional graduation ceremony here in Wilmington, at this point in time, as planned in June, is just simply not going to be a possibility. And so what she has put together is a virtual graduation that would consist of a blending of pre-recorded programming that would still try to weave into the mix the speeches that would normally be delivered if we were to be in person at the high school. The partnership of WCTV will help make this possible. And that will include the ability to focus and highlight student speeches, speeches by the town manager, the chairperson of the school committee, high school principal, of course, and myself. The plan is to have our assistant principals, again, as they do announce the names of each graduate, and WCTV would display a picture to honor that senior. There's also a plan in the works to have seniors drive through to receive their diplomas. This is something that I know if you're tuning into the news, you're hearing about some of these creative ideas to try and, try and make something possible. I'll also stress the fact that Ms. Peters is planning in early August a more traditional ceremony, limited in size, if social distancing restrictions are lifted. And so I wanted to bring to the school committee's attention that. I will just say a final piece. I know that some have been asking about and questioning why perhaps Ms. Peters and staff may not consider doing something like Governor Baker recently did at Gillette Stadium. I've talked to the Board of, Board of Health and talked to Ms. Peters and considered what that might look like. And quite honestly, Ms. Newhouse, the Board of Health does not, does not see how that would be simply possible to still stay within what is fully anticipated to be social distancing requirements. It would have to be very, very limited in scope. And so immediately, something very different than what unfortunately we're used to. So I did want to share that with the committee. She has begun to reach out to her families and, but I certainly wanted to take this opportunity to share it as well. And happy to take questions on either of those two items that the committee has.
Any questions from the committee? No? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item six, which is public comment. We had one person submit a request to make a public comment. Believe they are here with us. Kathleen Black Reynolds from 4th Second Avenue. You're on. Make sure you unmute. Or actually Tristan will unmute, I think.
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
I got it.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of myself and some of the coaches that I'm familiar with. I live at 4th Second Avenue. I've been a Wilmington resident for 25 years. Participated in all kinds of events, former historical commission member and currently on the library board of trustees. I've also been a tennis coach for the high school voluntarily. And I teach tennis for the recreation department, have been doing so for 20 years. I've been an adult coach of youth sports my entire adult life, all voluntary. And I, as I emailed each of you last week, I'm perplexed as to why the stipends are being withheld from our current coaches, all of the coaches. As you know, the monies are budgeted for well in advance. The monies are there. Not to mention that Wilmington has $24 million in what we call free cash. I think Wilmington should be a leader in this regard, rather than wait to see what other communities do and follow those leads. I think Wilmington should step up and be a leader and have other communities follow them and pay the full stipends for these coaches. I think that's really important, not just for our community, but other districts, but most importantly, for the coaches. As you know, we can talk about money all night long, but it's not just the coaches that likely depend on these stipends. It's their families as well. And these coaches don't just work the spring season. They work all year round with their students, with their players. They do all kinds of things behind the scenes, outside of the spring season. And in addition to that, there's, from my understanding of how spring sports work, since there are no buses, there's no officials required anymore. The money is there. So not quite sure why, why this committee has to even debate this issue. And on non-monetary issues, I just want to reiterate how much work and effort goes into what the coaches do. And I think, I think they deserve the respect and the consideration from this committee and the town as a whole. I think that what they give should be reciprocated. And I think this town, this committee should support what they do. It sort of leaves a bad taste, I would think, in their mouths if this committee and the district turns their back on them and doesn't pay them. Why they're being singled out and not being paid is another perplexity that I haven't yet gotten any answer to. I just think it makes sense from a loyalty perspective, from a leadership perspective, to pay these coaches that pulled stipends, not wait any longer. So I, those are my thoughts and I appreciate you letting, letting me voice them to you.
Thank you very much, Kathleen Black Reynolds, for making your comment and your emails. We appreciate them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven, old business. Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, Statements of Interest. Dr. Brand?
Actually, sorry, Ms. Bryson, could we just go back to public comment for a moment? There is the Student Opportunity Act, just to speak to.
Sorry, yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Just, just to highlight that. So we do have, as, as members of the committee will be reminded of, we have talked prior to the COVID-19 closure and we're ramping up to put forth an application to the Department of Education as per all district's requirements for the Student Opportunity Act. And although this seems very secondary, right now, given everything going on, it's still something that, although the deadline was relaxed by the Department of Education, it's still something that, for all intents and purposes, I think that we, as a district and all districts, are likely going to have to attend to. And so I just, if I may, bring to the attention of our community the opportunity for them to provide the district with any feedback on our plan that has been presented to the school committee for the Student Opportunity Act. That, that plan and the outline is included in the school committee packet and consistent with what our previous conversation was with the committee, although it is going back, I know, a little bit in time. It was your recommendation to provide the opportunity for our community at large to weigh in. There is a feedback form that is out there and that has been made available. And certainly, we have opened this up for feedback in this venue here. And it would be the intention at your next committee meeting to move forward to seek the school committee's approval to be able to submit this plan. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that feedback form that's available for the community.
Thank you very much. So now that brings us to number seven. MSBA Statements of Interest. Dr. Brand?
There are, there are a few pages in your packet, but they, they're there and they represent the six completed statement of interests for all six elementary schools. And they are here, as, as I said to you, that we would be sure to have final copies for you as well as, of course, for our town manager and the Board of Selectmen. These were submitted last week. Many thanks to Mr. Hooper specifically, Mr. Rogirio, for their assistance in helping us pull these together. And they have been submitted formally to the Mass School Building Authority. We made their deadline. Thank you to the committee for your support. Thank you also to the selectmen. And now we wait. We wait and with the anticipation that MSBA will still be shaping their work around their traditional deadlines. I would suspect that we will hear something, perhaps going into the summer, around what any next steps will be. And obviously, if or as we hear, I'll keep the committee posted. But again, I want to thank, thank everyone for their support. For those just tuning in and wondering what this is, in short, this is our, the town of Wilmington's effort to submit for grant money for possible down the road, new or renovated construction for our facilities. And we hope that we catch their attention and they'll come out and learn more about us. So that's all informational only, but thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to new business. I'm just checking to make sure no one has any comments. Mr. Samaha? Unmute.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just want to, I just want to thank Dr. Brand for, for, for all his work and the entire team's work in getting these statements of interests completed and submitted. It's, it's, it's more work, you know, for the, for those of you in the community, it's, it's more work than you could probably imagine. I, I just, I think it's, it's a fantastic move forward for our town in terms of what's needed with our, with our buildings and stuff. And I just wanted to, you know, publicly say thank you to Dr. Brand and his team for, for getting this done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number eight is new business, COVID-19 updates. Dr. Brand?
Sure, just a couple of fairly quick things here. The first, retrieval of student belongings in schools. Just to quickly make mention of the fact that, as you might imagine, we are, and members of our team are thinking about a whole host of things during this time period. This is perhaps a little bit farther down on the list, but it's still a reality that, that I know for many of our families looms large. And that is that many of our students may have personal belongings in their desks, their lockers, in their classrooms. And so something that we are, we've begun to think about in terms of how to try and facilitate this and this exchange. And as you might imagine, it's one that we're trying to be diligent about in our thinking. It's not going to be as simple, unfortunately, as sort of opening the doors on a Tuesday afternoon and allow hundreds or thousands of students into a school to, to get their belongings. So we don't have a perfect plan yet, but we have begun thinking about this. And it's something that I just wanted our parents and guardians to be aware of. We have not forgotten about the personal belongings that are in school. We just need to figure out a plan that obviously keeps everyone safe and that can make this possible. Secondly, student promotion for 2021. I just want to make mention of this because I know that I'm starting to get some questions from, from members of the community and those that are wondering about it, given this current situation and what the plan is for moving students on to the next grade. In short, I can tell you that it would be my position and that of our principals that we are effectively following the guidance and the guidelines and the recommendations from the commissioner. And that is to, to follow what generally speaking, research, research points to, and that is promoting students and moving them forward. There may be unique circumstances that, that may be a different reality for some of our students, but by and large, I just want to make clear that it's, it's my intent that we would be closely following the Department of Education and the commissioner's recommendation during this time period as we look ahead for 2021. And finally, the third item listed on the under COVID-19 update, MCAS student competency determination. I'll ask Dr. Regan just to briefly comment on this if he could.
Yeah, thank you. We, we wanted to add this just so the community was aware. You know, the state has given their guidance on this. Wilmington is fortunate in that we have no seniors that are still waiting to pass the MCAS for graduation. So that's certainly good news for our community. We got that report official from Ms. Peters just a couple of days ago. But if there, if there was a situation, the state has, just people are curious, they are allowing schools to use students, a senior's math and/or English grade as to determine whether or not they meet the competency determination for this year only. But again, wasn't an issue in this particular community, which is very good news.
Great, thank you, Dr. Regan.
I wound him in the silence.
I think Dr. Brand and I are trying to figure out who's gonna, who's gonna thank you, but thank you. I can make big lunch price increase for 2020, 2021. Dr. Brand, and I think I see Ms. Mary Palin here. Hi, Ms. Mary Palin, it's nice to see you. And I'll just jump in real fast and say, thank you, thank you, thank you for your incredible meals and for providing some consistency and joy to the children of Wilmington and for your email correspondence, letting people know what is on the menu. So it has been such a joy, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Brand?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna turn over to, to Mr. Rogirio in just a moment. But I do want to also thank Ms. Palin. If, if I may, with the will of the committee, I'll just read a brief email that actually came my way today, that is so fitting, giving that, given the Marys here on the line. We, we always hear statistics about, and I'm quoting, this is from one of our Wilmington teachers. "We always hear statistics about the number of children and families that experience food insecurity or hunger. And those stats are definitely going up each day. But it is really quite something when those numbers actually have faces. I just finished teaching an online class of fourth graders. And in the middle of the lesson, as we were transitioning from one activity to another, one of my students spoke up and said, quote, 'People should know that if you need food, they are giving it away at the Wilmington High School. My mom just got back from there and they gave her so much food,' end quote. I thanked the student for sharing that great information and then I was surprised at what happened next. Out of the 12 students in that class, more than half said that their parents had already gone or were getting ready to go to the high school to pick up the food. They shared that it starts at 9:30 and that the tacos are so good, just like in school. I'm so happy that for these students, there is no stigma attached to this and they feel comfortable sharing this important information. But I was just really surprised at the seven little faces who are depending right now on the work that you, Palin, and your team are doing. It hurts my little heart." Thought I would share that. There you go. We'll transition over to Mr. Rogirio and the item on the agenda, which is food prices. Mr. Rogirio?
Thank you. And before I get into that, just to give you an idea, so Ms. Palin and her staff have served since March 20th, over 39,000 meals, breakfasts and lunches. So it's just tremendous effort and it's so welcomed in the community. And again, Mary, thank you so much. This is an idea, almost 40,000 meals. Amazing. As we get into lunch price increases, I know this is a little bit difficult issue, but just some history, this has nothing to do with what we're going through right now as a nation, really. But oh, Mary and in the Food Service Department, they get reviewed or looked at each year by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Over the past couple of years, they have recommended to Mary to increase lunch prices. Through discussions, we have kind of decided not to, but it's come to a point where we, we actually do need to increase the prices a bit. The last price increase went in FY15. So it'll be, this would be if approved for FY21. So, you know, five or six years without a price increase in the food service area. So that, that's what's before you right now. So we'd ask for, you know, a vote or whatever on Mary's recommendation to increase the lunch prices as included in the memo.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Mr. Rogirio. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns? Maybe?
Sorry. Technical difficulties. I'd like to make a motion to approve, sorry, lost the motion. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm ad libbing right now. To approve the 2021 increase in lunch prices? Someone wants to read the motion? Can do a little better than I can.
It's Mr. Bjork?
Yep. All right, so I move that we approve, we move, move that we approve a meal price increase. Is the, is the motion actually written out or am I just going off of this memo?
I think we can just say, motion to do the lunch price increase for 2020, 2021. Is that correct, Mr. Rogirio?
Yes. Did you want me to summarize the increases? Would that be easier?
Well, I've got it here. I can read through all the different, all the different pricing.
It's just an overall one, Steve. I think that's fine.
All right. So my motion is to approve the recommended school lunch increases.
For 2020, 2021.
2020, 2021.
Is there a second? Mr. Samaha, thank you. All in favor?
Jen, can we have discussion?
Session, yeah. My, I'm sorry. Mr. Ragsdale?
I had two questions. One was, what was Desi's reason for wanting us to increase our lunch prices or our meal prices?
I'll, I'll try and, Mary, if you, if I misspeak, you can fill me in. But my understanding is, they always want us to have a certain balance in our revolving account to cover three to four months' worth of operating expenses. And we were teetering close to that, so they had made a recommendation to increase the prices.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, in the district comparison that was provided to us in the memo, it seems that of all the districts that were listed, with the exception of Tewksbury, that the staff lunches are no cost. And I wanted to ask, is that because they don't serve staff lunches? Or is that simply a choice that those districts have made to comp essentially staff meals?
Yeah, no, they're, they're not allowed to comp staff meals. That's, we're a federally funded program, so that's not allowed. So if there wasn't a price there for the adult meals, it's probably because I could not either get a hold of their food service director. I couldn't find it on their website. Because of COVID going on, I was doing a lot of the research. Because of COVID going on, I was doing a lot of the research uh via the web and not everyone posts the adult meal prices on their webpages. They typically are more concerned about posting uh what families will have to pay for their student lunches.
Okay, that makes sense. That, that jumped out at me, but uh, that explanation makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fenelly?
I'm sorry, I'm just i- i- in reading this, thinking about it, I, I have no objection to the, to the, the increase, but I don't know Paul, Mary, who best would answer this question, but uh, do you think that the increases as they're sort of spelled out here would be sufficient to get us through more than just next year, or are we gonna be, are we setting ourselves up to be looking at incremental increases exponentially throughout the next couple of years, or do we think this is good for two or three years?
So that's a good question. Um, and a couple of things. One is um, the USDA and Department of Education would prefer that we actually increase every year by a minimal amount because um they always want the paying students to be at or very close to the cost of what the federal government and the state government give us for reimbursement for a free lunch, just so you're aware. We are below that and we've been below that for a very, very long time. Um, and it's been, it was a battle for me for years to get that done, but anyway. Um, they prefer that we do it each year. I don't particularly like to do that every year to parents. Um, however, it's really, we're, as far as food service goes right now and the costs we're looking at, we're one of the only dis- the, one of the only collaboratives that's already done their bids for the next year. Uh, but we did it, we're still finishing up and reviewing them, but we are anticipating that we're gonna find significant paper costs. Um, and we're not sure what next year entails on how we're serving, what we're gonna be serving, how we're going to be serving. So for instance, if for some reason we come back in the fall and they say you're no longer allowed to use um the dish machine with the, the trays that get washed every day and you have to buy more paper, we're going to, we're going to find more costs. So ideally, this will be fine and this will take care of it. But honestly, we're not gonna know until we get into next year.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the price increase? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eight C, Superintendent Goals Final Update, um Evaluation Process, Dr. Brand.
Uh, sure, thank you very much. Um, so um, I have included um or put together rather two items that um uh for the purposes of sort of trying to put a wrap, a summary, I guess if you will, on uh the, the goals that I had uh prepared for and provided you with um at the beginning of the year. So there are two documents um that you have access to, uh, that are part of the uh, uh, public uh materials. Um, the first is uh, uh, we're documented as a memo that um, uh, I tried to encapsulate sort of uh and, and highlight um the goals that specifically um I, I said at the beginning. I'll just remind the, the committee um that um this is uh an effort to try and be in line with um the revised format that the Department of Education has put together for superintendent evaluation. And so uh, back in um late August and September, I came before you with uh one professional practice goal, one student learning goal, uh, the recommendation of between two to four district improvement goals and um six to eight um, the terminology used in the rubric, aligned indicator goals. Um, and, and so these were uh, th- these can serve as a framework, if you will, uh, for uh, school committee to consider in terms of the, the evaluation superintendent around uh, around their performance. Um, in the memo, I, I tried to provide sort of a, a, a summary of where uh, in the winter, the January um, sort of mid-year point, roughly speaking, uh, was in terms of the efforts to date. Um, a summary of those materials have been, thanks to Tristan, have been populated in a folder that you have access to that tries to pull everything together, so you don't have to go searching for, for that. So I'm hopeful that that's uh, that's somewhat helpful. Um, you might recall at that time that I had asked for your support to uh, to effectively put on hold a couple of the goals that um I brought forward to you. Um, simply as we were entering into specifically um the MSBA process. Um, also at the time, it was mentioned of the Student Opportunity Act. In the end, Dr. Regan really um shepherded um that work there, but the MSBA process, and because of that, um, and, and to your, to your thanks, uh, you allowed me to sort of put those on hold. Uh, this document provides an overview though, uh, and sort of an end of the year summary and update um on the different goals that um I felt I could appropriately comment on. Um, as you might imagine, and, and uh, as I try to point out in here, the reality is this, obviously uh, this report is different than what I had envisioned um in August, uh, given the uh significant or abrupt pause that we've had. Um, and, and that has um without question, unfortunately, impeded progress um in terms of what I had hoped on, on some of the goals. And I, I try to, try to be honest in capturing that um through, uh, through that one document. I, I also put together um a document based upon your feedback, and it seemed like members um liked the one-page summary overview that is uh in more of a uh spreadsheet format, I suppose, if you will. That's also available for you in the packet, and I tried to keep the formatting consistent. Um, again, based upon the, what seemed to be a helpful uh document last time around, but I've updated the far right column. So I'm happy to go through any of these if you'd like in more detail, uh, but I, I just thought I would provide that as, as an overall summary and, and obviously a compliment for the work that y- you're about to engage in uh or have started around my uh end of the year evaluation. So with that, I guess, Ms. Bryson?
Um, so we'll stop there for a minute. Other questions, comments about the documents for Dr. Brand? Okay. Seeing none. All right.
Did you want me to go through each one or uh each, each of the goals? I mean, I'm happy to if you, if you'd like.
Mr. Let me see, Mr. Raxdale, and then I'll Mr. Raxdale?
Uh, so I two things. One, I wanted to see if we uh, if we know when the subcommittee is planning to meet uh for uh determining the indicators that we're going to be evaluating on. And secondly, much of what Dr. Brand, in fact, has been having to do in the last two months is not something, of course, we anticipated in, at the be, either the beginning of the year or mid-year when the goals were first set or when the goals were adjusted. And does the, I mean, does the evaluation process still give us the flexibility to take that into account and appropriately, you know, evaluate the work he has been doing and will do to the end of the year, essentially the last three months of the year? Uh, even given that it, they won't, it won't align perfectly with the goals that we originally defined. Because I think without, without somehow, without some way of doing that, then it really would be an incomplete evaluation.
So I can answer the first question. The subcommittee is meeting Friday at one PM. And that is to determine the timeline, so when we're going to ask school committee members to complete their own evaluations, submit them, and it'll provide, and when we're planning on pulling it together and then providing it to Dr. Brand. So that's, we're meeting on Friday at one o'clock, so we will send the timeline via email and then any other discussion, obviously, we'll have to bring that back to our next public meeting. As far as your, your question regarding the last few months, I mean, I can take a stab at it. My, I mean, I think that there are ways to incorporate the work that's happened in the past few months using the, the overall rubric. But Dr. Brand, do you want to? Do you wanna talk us through that?
Um, so it's uh, yeah, it poses a good question, and I'm not sure that I have necessarily the, the best answer, to be honest. Um, I think that, I, I, first off, I think that there is the, the leeway within the document, the rubric itself, to still certainly touch upon other, other elements even outside of the goals. So I think that that's, you know, as you, as you revisit that uh, the document, if you haven't taken a look at it for a while, I think that you, you would agree with that. Um, I do think though that it raises a good question in terms of um, in terms of the goals and how you evaluate that. And I've been thinking a little bit about this, and one thing that comes to mind, I'm thinking back to Dorothy Presser's um presentation some time ago. I'm confident that I remember her talking about the um flexibility or having in circumstances committees uh work with the superintendent to allow goals to be over a two-year span, right? So not just a single year. And so it is a, it is a bit of a thought um that I had in terms of whether or not perhaps as a committee, uh, y- you may wish to consider that in terms of and, and we would still have to figure out, you know, how that fits in with your evaluation this year. So I'm not saying it's roll over the evaluation to next year, but perhaps the goals could be. That may be something that you wish to consider, and I'm, I'm sure, you know, MASC could weigh, weigh in on that or, or even you know, even um uh le- legal counsel, if you, you know, if you wanted to, to pursue that.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Raxdale.
Um, uh, there is a summative general comment area on these evaluations. Um, um initially that you, one could really elaborate as much as one would like to. Um, and again, it's up to the subcommittee to kind of com- composing, com- um comprise all of our comments into one final evaluation, so um, but there, there's, there's areas to expand upon. Uh, not only the goals that uh Dr. Brand has set forth, but um, I, I mean, I know I've used it to expand upon um areas that have um, may have been based on the goals, but have kind of um metamorphosis to other areas that show strong leadership. Um, you know, you know, and, you know, management and operations, others, other aspects, not necessarily evidence, but um results of that aspect, you know. So it, it, it absolutely could be um elaborated, especially in this unique situation that we find ourselves in within the evaluation.
Thank you. Mr. V, I'm gonna bring your attention just to a couple of documents in the folder. So those of you that are new to this process, I, we did upload the twenty nineteen evaluation report. It's a little bit different than sort of how we're doing it now, but I think it provides a good model, so you can see some of the work. And so basically, we all completed our own, and then the subcommittee worked together to, to pull it all together. So what you're seeing there is a combination of everybody's comments essentially, but it's there, it's just an example for you um as you start to do this work. And then in the superintendent evaluation documents, the one that you will be, there are a couple of different things there, all helpful to work through. The one that you should use as you start to complete your own is titled Brand underscore End of Cycle Summit of Evaluation, and there are, there's a blank one, and then there's this one, and I just bring your attention to this because Dr. Brand and I have already populated the goals and the focus indicators and description, if you notice on page four. The other one that just says Summit of Evaluation is a blank form from, from the state. So when you're using, when you're doing it, use this one, because we've already put in the goals and the focus indicators, just to make it a little bit more straightforward for you, so you're not having to go back and look at multiple documents. Okay. Again, as far as a timeline, the subcommittee will send that out as soon as they have a chance to meet and discuss. Other questions or comments? Would you like Dr. Brand to go through them? One by one, in case you have specific questions?
That's not necessary for me.
Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to use a little wait time and I'm re- I'm trying to read the room, but it's difficult to read the room when we're on the screen. Okay. All right, Dr. Brand, do you have anything else to share?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Um, item number nine is other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Okay. No, just as a note again, superintendent, subcommittee will be meeting Friday at one o'clock. Item number ten, correspondence?
None this evening.
Thank you. Future school committee dates and notable agenda items. We have, our next two meetings are listed here, May twenty-seventh and June tenth. We do anticipate, we do have the, this, the last one in June, it's not on this list here. But we did tentatively have that scheduled, and I would say probably to hold that date. And I'm just looking at it right now to make sure I give you the exact one. Twenty-four, the twenty-four, yeah. So I would hold that. I imagine we'll need that date to provide the final evaluation, but that's just a guess. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? No. Okay, just a note, I did see that the pre-recorded webinars, the collaboration with McLean Hospital Parenting in Time of Coronavirus is available. So I do encourage parents to go and take a look when you have some time. And if there's nothing further, we just need a final motion for adjournment.
To adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale, second? Mr. Bjork, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you so much. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everybody.